Okay, it's 5:30, we call meeting to order. Just stand with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why do you say that?
I just didn't see your head go fly down.
Oh, no, I didn't. I need to say that.
Okay, first order business is approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Approval of the 29th minutes?
I don't have my comments over here. One second, please.
Motion?
Yeah.
Motion.
And she said it.
Second. Motion's been made in second, all in favor? No public comments? Okay, before we chair into it, Mel, Rachel, have you got anything you want to say? Questions?
No, I was trying to go over the stuff from last meeting.
Yeah. We voted for you.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, thanks. No, it's just the only thing that I had a question on was under electronic participation, the change, it says, electronic participation in the board's executive session may be B permitted.
We're gonna take that up right now.
Okay.
All right?
Maybe B.
One of the leaves.
Wendy. Have you uncovered any statute that prohibits electronic participation in executive session?
No, I have not. For the benefit of all of you is I, we found some other policies that talk about electronic participation in board meetings, so it's not statutorily prohibited. But what we need to talk about today, and sure the committee or you, is what kind of policy exactly do you want to have? For example, this policy from Charleston states, "The board allows its members to participate by electronic or by other means such as telephone, video telephone conferences in the board's meeting, provided such participation is not disruptive to the proceedings. If it does become disruptive, members of the board can choose to just allow the participation." Participation includes all discussions and voting. This allowance will be made only in exceptional circumstances that would prevent in-person participation, e.g. medical emergencies, military service, job restraints, travel situations, standing emergencies, or other uncontrollable circumstances. And I had spoken with the, with the staff in the IT department, because part of participating by telephone or by video conferencing is that the people that are attending the meeting need to be able to hear what is being said. The public needs to know, and the board members need to be able to hear what is being said. So I was asking Mr. Confair, who is, Mr. Chalmers, who was with you on the executive session, how do you, what can be done so that the public can hear what's going on? And I gave him, you know, our policy, what kind of, what kind of technology can be helpful? And what, and this is what I wanted to tell you all, he said, you should tell.
Oh, yes, sir.
Do y'all expect any more people to arrive?
Not sure what time they would.
Yeah, we're not sure.
But y'all expect more people to come?
There's a possibility.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, what he said to me in an email, he said, "Your, your committee might want to consider having board meetings in Bufer County School District or Media Center, because in those, in, when we are at the Media Center, we can control sound systems. But when we're out of the area, sometimes our audio doesn't work well, especially in Bluffton," is what he said. And he said here, "If you're talking about remote board participation, I highly recommend we move our meetings to the Media Center, we can control the environment." Charleston Berkeley use their own facilities for their meetings, and they can, you know, provide really excellent technology. So, that was just a suggestion for y'all's consideration. Because I didn't, I didn't realize in Bluffton sometimes it was hard for people to hear.
It's hard for us to hear.
Sorry for y'all.
I have a question. You said, "Now, the public does not have to hear the executive session."
Right.
Okay, so that's, that's.
Right, the executive session is when you're all in another room, because you're receiving information of a confidential nature, and you're receiving information that are understood by the turn of the bridge, or you're receiving information that's open.
So basically, what the staff is recommending is exactly what we did last Friday and Saturday, which is to put the phone on table in the U. It would enhance things if they put a microphone by the phone, so that.
I don't know.
Were you able to hear?
I could hear you guys.
You could hear fine?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
But I'm talking about incoming.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys can hear me well or not.
We could hear you, not easily, but could you?
Yeah.
Mr. Cam, please.
And I was in a car, too.
Were you able to hear?
Yes.
Okay. Because you were across the way. Okay.
So the only, the ultimate question is still executive session. So.
So if we are doing that by executive session, then we would ensure that we, this is the part that's really difficult, is that if you have to call in because of an emergency, you can't call in from a Starbucks or from someplace that's not a secure network, because that conversation would be intercepted. If you're really careful about where you're calling in from. But we, when we talked about this, something I want to share with y'all is, in executive session, there are times when there are documents that if you're not present, it would be hard, like, say you called in for an executive session, because it would be, because with your job, you have to travel sometimes, and you need to be able to call in. And the board wants you to be able to participate with them. But then you don't have, how do you feel about not having all the documents that are being presented in executive session? I mean, you can't really, like, hold them up on a video screen or something, I don't know. How would you do that?
Well, you just might take it on that. Since a member who is participating at the public meeting electronically has every right to vote on any motions that come out of the executive session, whether or not they're in the executive session, being able to participate in the verbal discussion, I think, is the most a member can expect, okay? If you've got documents, that's, you missed them by missing the meeting, but you don't, you don't miss the ability to articulate the individual, to verbal back and forth.
But how about this idea, if we knew ahead of time, for the board, the board member had to be out, so you had to be at a conference or something, and you knew you're not going to be present, we knew ahead of time. I mean, if there was a way for us to be able, I don't know how we would do this, so, so that each member would have enough information to feel comfortable to be able to vote.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, the person has a right to vote, period, whether they're comfortable about it or not.
But I'm thinking about how the board member would look at it, maybe. But there's other, I got policies for y'all to look at, see how y'all like it. Like this one is from Alro, so. Can I look at this to see, to hear, like, how ahead of time if you have to participate? And, you know, letting, letting the staff or the board depend on extenuating circumstances where you'd be, what location, identify the location, where you're just coming from, so. And this one policy I found, that one said, "Board members can attend at a maximum a certain number of years." I mean, I know they have a right, but you don't need to think about how often, or if it's, you, you don't want a member that never comes for you.
Well, that's, again, you hope that doesn't happen, but we can't legislate that. There's no attendance requirement put on a member when they take the oath. Now, so I guess, back to the original question, is that the Freedom of Information Act definitely allows electronic participation, but does not make any distinction between public sessions and executive sessions. Correct? So, my thinking is that we have no choice, we cannot prohibit participation electronically in the executive session. Can I ask a question? Yes, it wrote.
For me, I have a problem with, 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 with communication on the form of an executive session, because you do not know who's, who's sitting next to that person, wherever they are. I don't have, I don't have a problem with the public. And the reason this was put into place, it was put into place because we had two board members that was ill, and they could not attend the meetings. And that's the reason why we had, this, this was put into place. I, I have a problem with, with, with executive session. Public is fine, public meeting is fine, but executive session, I, I can't support that, you know? I'm just one person.
You head and hand up your hands.
When Wendy was talking about putting materials, we had the ability to put information into board docs only in the executive, like, for this meeting on May 7th, you have an item in executive session from Robert regarding the maintenance contract. So, information can be put into board docs for executive session. It can be given to leave ahead of time, it could be put in ahead of time afterwards, but that information will remain in the executive session portion, so.
And it's.
That's not open to the public. Public cannot see the items that's put in the executive session side.
Well, that would be helpful.
Do you happen to know, and this is kind of like an IT question, like, how that's encrypted or protected or something like that, if it's just our login information?
I don't know.
That's only doing that. I agree about, because I'm, I'm inclined to prohibit participation in executive session electronically, just because of encrypting things, and we obviously, you know, it's, I think it's a liability for us, and I think as long as, if we are going to prohibit it, as long as we put a small line as to why, I think we're protected then from, if someone comes later and says, "Oh, well, you know, we should be allowed to participate electronically regardless." I will say, though, that I think that we should look into getting an opinion from.
We do.
From Wendy.
She's our, she's our legal, we're legal.
She's the district's attorney, yes, and, but I'm talking about something more substantial, so that if we are going to codify it and put it in a policy to even prohibit it, or otherwise, I think we should know and ask an authority on, on the matter beyond this Wendy, and that's not a slight to Wendy in any capacity, it's just I think that we should cover our bases, not her teeth, not her eyes.
Do understand that whatever you, whatever board members have in board docs, board members have the ability of printing out. It's not necessarily, but whatever, everything in board docs, board members have the ability to print anything out that's in board docs.
Wendy, can you contact the Attorney General's office and get her? Talk to them about that.
I think, I think that would just be another way that we're covering all of our bases, to make sure. I mean, if it's not clear by the law, then.
To me, it's clear, if, that's what.
Well, if it doesn't mention.
If that's what the chair if you want to do.
If it doesn't mention public and non-publics.
I think it doesn't mention, it should give it.
Right, it doesn't mention, so it's not clear if you're making it.
Okay, all right, so we'll consider that still on hold? Okay?
And just for matter of record, I was just trying to figure out, because it said under D, it said, "Maybe B permitted," and I just wanted to make sense of it in a typo or something.
Which one, which one are you talking about?
Um, under electronic participation, B.
They were saying ma, they were saying maybe.
They were leaving it open?
Yes, yes, that's what it was.
Intentional.
Yeah, it was intentionally to left open.
Cool, thank you.
But the other B in red should be taken out, shouldn't it?
Got it.
Okay, so that brings us to 2.5, delegation of authority to the superintendent.
That is not in your red copy, that is in your original, because it was never changed. So go back to the document that's in, it says, "Section 2 Board Policies," this document. 2.5 is in that, because it's a, it's a policy that has not been changed. So that's why. It's in this document.
Okay, section A says, "The board will develop overarching policies to govern the work of the district as defined in the board-approved strategic plan." Make sense? Okay, now, B, though, is, I think, needs slight modification. "The board delegates to the superintendent the responsibility and authorities for establishing and executing administrative rules and procedures appropriate to achieving the board's mission and results." Now, I would bet that that was written before the board gave the superintendent the responsibility for presenting administrative regulations to the board prior to their implementation. And it does not mention that all administrative regulations have to be noted as to what policy they tie back to. If there's no policy, when we do the crosswalk, if there's no policy to tie it to, then it's, we either got, either got to do a policy or modify the administrative regulation. Okay? So, what I would suggest is that superintendent really does not have the authority for establishing it, because it's dependent on review by the board. So why don't we say, "The board delegates to the superintendent the responsibility for establishing and executing administrative rules and procedures appropriate to achieving the board's mission and results," and then we can include, "All administrative regulations must be presented to the board prior to their implementation."
I don't see anything, I don't see anything on what's written.
I'm sorry?
I don't, I don't see, I see a difference in what you're interpreting, in my, in my mind, what you're interpreting as a superintendent's role, as opposed to a board's role in this, in this relationship.
Well, after the nepotism scandal.
I mean, the way this is written. The way this is written, superintendent can't do anything but design rules himself for executing what we have determined were the policies.
And if y'all will also look at Policy 3.9 Administrative Regulation.
In this packet?
In this one.
It's kind of like the, the one, the one that wasn't reviewed or something, wasn't changed.
See, that's Policy 3.9.
Going to that last one. That's what you're saying, yeah. It would become a perdu.
Yeah, so.
Well, all I'm trying to say, Mel, is that this B is in conflict with established board policy, because board policy is that all administrative regulations are presented to the board prior to their implementation. So we have to forget or make the language compatible.
To make sure it says that. To make sure it says that, but what the language does say is accurate and true.
Yeah, because we outlined another episode, like, oh, S13, where it got changed without the board knowing about it.
The language doesn't seem consistent. So in B, it talks about administrative rules and procedures. But then when you go to 3.9, the title is different.
Administrative regulations.
Right, administrative regulations. So, I don't know if these, "Authority for Establishing and Executing Administrative Rules and Procedures" is more so in regard to something else, not, not the administrative regulations. Like, I'm wondering if, if, if it is what you're discussing, the administrative regulations and the PEs and all that, then we need to make sure the language is consistent throughout the entire manual.
All right, so.
But if they're referring to something else here, I don't know.
But almost 13, you could go under that.
They're referring to the same thing, the language wasn't inconsistent.
Okay, so then we probably need to clarify that, or, whatever I need to say.
Called the rules, sometimes it's called regs, but they should be.
It should all be.
Yeah.
Change the language in B, you're ready to listen?
So 3.9 is to become part of.
So, it's not like the board is inventing the rules, the regulations and rules, it's just reviewing what the superintendent has in mind before they're implemented to make sure that it conports with the will of the board.
But 3.9, it says, goes to the appropriate board committee for review and input.
Huh?
3.9 says, "All proposed administrative regulation change to appropriate board committee for review and input."
Yeah.
Right, is it that? I'm, I'm thinking 3.9 should actually be scratched and put under here, as maybe a D?
Well.
Because then it, it kind of, but this descends delegation of authority.
This is a delegation of authority to the superintendent. This is what the board allows the superintendent to do.
Yeah.
What's 3.9, what's the topic? Topic of 3.9 is.
Is the process of how he'll do it.
Right.
They're both competitive.
Yeah, they're both, yeah, this is, this is accurate.
One follow, 3.9 follows 2.5.
All right.
And should it say administrative regulations and performance expectations?
No, we, we don't look performance expectation. They're our expectations, then. The superintendent demonstrates that he or she has met.
And what were the, so he is just a procedure.
PE is just a measurement tool.
So then procedures.
So, here's the reading on results, that's what it said, that's the word, in there, results. Which now have to be rewritten, too, right? The results have to be rewritten, too? Be added then.
We have on the agenda tomorrow, because there is no results.
That's what I mean.
I mean, there's no, there's no established policy here, we don't have it to resolve.
So, you know what we should probably do, then, whenever we, excuse me, whenever we reference results, we could put parentheses, PE after it, and then tie it together, because PE is the results. Otherwise, people are going to be searching around with this document called results.
Yeah.
I have results.
It doesn't exist. Yes, well.
The results aren't the PEs. The PEs are the performance expectations that come in. The result is a section that comes out of the goals that you set in the evaluation of the superintendent.
Okay, all right, that's.
So the, the results are in PEs are two different.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Right, that's what I, that's what I.
The results are, are the, what you set, you're expecting.
Yeah, board sets an expectation.
For, for, no, superintendent.
So I looked at the, I believe it was Ori County, their 62-page document pages in board docs, is that where it is? It's somewhere, loaded somewhere. And that had, in that, it had eight pages of results. So basically, what they, they were there was, the four major subjects, they, they had as results. They didn't say exactly, you know, what, but it had, they call it numeracy, literacy, social studies, and science. Then they had SAT and ACT. And they also had basically, like, good citizens, good citizenship is another portion of it. There's one or two other things, I think I mentioned that to you, do you remember what the other things were? Yeah, it's, so it was mostly test results, but it did have, really, things about being a good citizen and lifelong learning, is part of it, yeah.
Yeah, it's, these, sometimes people develop something like a results page, and they wanted to do too many things. They wanted to show results, then they wanted to be an evaluation tool. It just, results leads to the evaluation tool, doesn't become an evaluation tool. So, maybe results is not the best word, but we, we can use it for that, we can add a change.
That isn't resulted currently as the original, the evaluation value? Presently in our policies?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Right now, as it's written, I think that's what it says.
We'll, we'll get to that, all right. Go ahead.
Two things, number one, on that, with, I know this is a topic for the meeting, but I just wanted, I think we had discussed using before the South Carolina report card, the information, the data, is that up in board docs also?
No.
For what were evaluated for the report card, I thought we were looking at, can I try and mirror it?
I have copied, I can give you the results that were used before, because it was up under value, so that you can have a sample of how the results in the governance was used before, if you want to see what, what was done.
Because, I'm sort of getting off topic, but where is that available?
I have it, and I can scan it and email it.
I think that would be good for everybody.
Have a idea of what it looks like before. And then the other thing was, it says, it mentions board's mission under B, 2.5 B, appropriate issue of the board's mission. Is the mission under, is that basically the entire statement that's under introduction? Or is that two?
Yeah, 1.3. Regrettably, 1.3.
Okay, so I was trying to find, was where.
We can go back to 1.3 if we want to re-engineer that a little bit.
Yeah, I was just trying to find it, but I don't have it here.
It's in the board's policy section.
Oh, it's under.
It's in this one. I think because we didn't change it.
I just wanted to make sure, yeah, got it, okay, 1.3, mission, but if we're referring to something, then it should exist, so that's awesome.
Right, if we can jump ahead then, just for a second, to 2.6A. "Subject to available resources achieves the student's performance goals adopted by the board through..." Okay, can we have the results section of the, wherever the results section is found?
It's its own document, though, right?
The results is its own document, so right now, it's a blank page, because you have not established results.
Okay.
So right now.
We will, we will, so let's.
So that would be like section four or five in the notebook, I can't, the notebook, but. But right now, the results section is a blank page, because you don't have any established results.
So that's.
Results in, what is that document or that book called?
Our strategic governance.
And that's what I have, yeah, okay, so it would read, and I got you, Mel, hold on. "Subject to available resources achieves the student performance goals adopted by the board through the results section of the strategic plan."
Strategic governance manual?
Yes.
Strategic governance policy.
But it was last revised July 2011.
Yours was 2017, that's the one he brought to, he didn't give to you.
Mel, I'm sorry, look, yeah, I, I'm confused in terms of.
The results are established before or with, or during the superintendent's contract? I mean, how can you, I mean, when do you establish the result for evaluation, for the evaluation tool? In my mind, for the evaluation tool, the superintendent's a D in. In my mind, for the evaluation tool, the superintendent's a D in successful or not successful for certain time period, right?
So you're asking, is that in the superintendent's contract?
No, I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying that. Yeah, it should, something about the results should be in the contract, or something about the evaluation should be in the contract. And how do you evaluate it?
Well, okay.
This language.
Yeah.
So we can refer to, and in the contract, you can refer to results as listed in, da, 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 da.
You don't have to list them in the contract.
Yeah, but we're doing it on tomorrow.
Yeah.
We're doing the results on tomorrow?
Well, we're, we're beginning a discussion on it.
Beginning a discussion, right.
Yeah.
How, how do we wanna do it?
Yeah.
And is it, well, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, is it gonna be done before?
Yeah, until you know that.
To put that in the evaluation tool? Oh, yeah, okay. Or is it gonna be done afterwards with agreement that?
Every contract I've ever seen just simply references that the board and the superintendent will discuss the process of how the evaluation's done. But the contract never specifies it because you may wanna change that the next year based on what happened. And then you have to reopen the superintendent's contract. And you don't, you know, you don't want to, there's a danger in making that contract an encyclopedic document that specifies everything down and what color next time it guys go.
Yeah, you can always address that by saying, you can always address it by putting it to these results as listed in our strategic policy manual and any other agreed, you know, so at least reference what the things are that we have as our guide. Um, and then we have, you know, delegation over, but then also have a catchall in there that addresses that.
Yeah, so we can, I think the job with the policy is to define things to the point where the contract and any other associated document can reference the policy manual without spelling out, without regurgitating what's in.
For this, but I just, I'm thinking beyond this and.
Having a more.
Yeah, we now have this defined, for our purpose, this defined, but it doesn't exist. So it's really useless and that's, it, you know, unless we have it. We put that word in there, but nobody knows what it is.
Well, it's incumbent on us to.
Yeah, that's why we're so important.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So we can't leave it out just because we.
No, right, certainly, right.
All right, so back, going, going, back to the two point five.
Two point nine.
Section C seems, uh, this, this is called the Alice, Alice Walton phrase, that the superintendent puts somebody in charge. The former superintendent, we didn't know who had been designated to be in charge. Dr. Berg has been pretty clear at all times who's, who's in charge when he's not there. Everybody's got a backup, everybody's gotta have a backup.
Can we go back to B? I don't think we clarified what was gonna happen to it.
Hmm?
I don't think we clarified what was gonna happen at P.
Okay, let me read it again then. The board delegates to the superintendent responsibility for establishing and executing administrative rules and procedures appropriate to achieving the board's mission and results.
Right, but administrative rules and procedures language is not consistent with the rest of the policy. It should say administrative regulations.
Well, it's bad rules and procedures.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And I think it needs to be capital administrative, capital regulations. Administrative regulations as appropriate, or is S?
For establishing and executing administrative.
That's why I think then, because of the capitalization.
Right, any capitalization or.
In, in my mind, when it didn't capitalize it, I would.
It left it open.
Yeah, they left it as a subtopic in terms of administrative regulations.
All right, so it would read then, I think, if I got it all right, the board delegates to the superintendent responsibility for establishing and executing administrative regulations appropriate to achieving the board's mission and results. Now, the next sentence that I talked about actually belongs in three point nine because that's a, that's a process statement, a process statement, okay? And it, it's pretty clear in three point nine. So we don't need that one that I suggested about presenting the A Rs. Okay, so is that right?
Uh, I don't find that, yeah.
Now, back to two, back to two point six.
So in two point six, she had.
Superintendent has two major responsibilities upon which he, she. I'm not sure whether the statement about two major responsibilities should be in the policy, whether that's the right number.
You want for five.
Number one, it says triple capacity.
Huh?
Number one, it says triple capacity.
Yeah, so there. Here on, uh, Oda, that's the page.
The board uses superintendent's position.
Oda one has the blue and red.
These are the policies as they exist.
Okay, but I believe you guys want to add anything that wants to the red and the blue.
Yes.
Right? And it has a whole other.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
It's in this one.
Number two.
The first thing. Read it.
But then it comes back and say two.
Exactly.
Uh, then on number two.
He, um, actually, the, I think by the standard definition of a chief, of a chief executive officer, the following two phrases after that are redundant, that's understood. I mean, it's understood, if he's the CEO, he's the leader and the accountability officer for the personnel and he's a liaison between those personnel and the board. So I would favor just saying that board views the superintendent's position as the executive officer of Beaufort County School District.
Agreed.
Yeah, I was thinking the word chief should be.
Because executive officer in military terms.
Hmm?
So when I hear executive officer, I hear, I think of it in military terms as opposed to chief executive officer, which.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe we need to put chief.
Right now, he's a military executive officer, almost becomes a chief executive officer. Yes, Robin.
You shouldn't say chief because Alice, Tanya and Robert are chief officers. Their positionings are, Alice is the chief officer of human resources.
Right, but that's, in any, in any organizational hierarchy, you would have like a C O O, a C F O, a C E O. So you would use chief.
Chief, yeah, chief.
Yeah.
But that puts him, elevates him as the biggest of the chiefs.
Of the chiefs, because they had, had chief.
I think everybody relates to CEO.
Yeah, CEO.
Pretty much, so how about if we have the role?
Sorry.
The board views the superintendent's position as the chief executive officer of the Beaufort County School District and staple.
Yeah, two point six.
Yeah, two point six.
Point six.
That's fine, that's fine.
We're on this one. You don't have to want the red and the blue in the red.
That's fine, that's.
Yeah.
That red was what, um, school board association had recommended.
That allows you to do number two without.
Totally caught up.
So, yeah, well, we're just changing, keeping the first part, taking out the triple capacity language and changing it.
Period, I mean, after V C S D.
Yes, ma'am.
And the rest comes out.
About leader and personnel.
Yeah, this has basically the description of what's E U.
Okay, Roman numeral two, I have no idea why that's in there. I think the board has to define the major responsibilities on which the superintendent will be evaluated due to the cir, I mean, with the circumstances of the time. There's much more responsibility than is listed here, much more responsibility. And I don't think that they all need to be in there anyway because we've just made them a C E O. So by definition.
That's just.
I mean, subject to available resources, that's a, it's a cute little.
I know where that came. I think, I think that we should add some type of language that says, you know, like this is non exhaustive. Basically this Roman numeral two, there's two major responsibilities to include but not limited to or something. Or the superintendent, uh, superintendent has responsibilities upon which he or she will be evaluated to include but not limited to. And then because it's important, I think, that this lists out the results section and the P E's that directly points to, those are the two main indicators of performance and responsibility. I think, I mean, that's what they're gonna, nine times out of ten be tied to. Is there performance under those?
I could see that, if, would you be, uh, okay with taking out the subject, subject to available resources piece?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's subjective, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, you're gonna take that out.
What resources are we talking about? And who's responsible for resources and all that.
You don't assume that when, when, when those goals are set, it's set with the, you know, expectancy that it's gonna be the resources needed to get it done.
So.
Like you said, that's a.
Okay, Wendy, this one's yours.
On qualifications?
Yeah.
You all have in the back of your packet, you have the regulation forty-three dash sixty-four. And if you go to, um, page, it's, it's, it's at page three or two, back to second, it's gonna say district superintendent. It talks about what's required to become a district superintendent as well as an F district superintendent alternative route for career changers. That's what the current law requires, and I spoke to the Department of Education. And, and they told me that they're getting ready to change some of the examinations that require by the state board. So the red will probably change in the next year, so this is the current state of affairs.
Fast as the creek.
So either this.
And it's not, it is not a license under that's district superintendent and that's alternative route. There's two ways to become superintendent. One is to meet these credentials and the other one is to do an alternative route. And then alternative route is when you have served in a senior position of leadership, like a state or military corporation or agency, CEO of a business.
Got it.
But it's not a license, it needs to be taken out of there because it should say all other, I don't know if you sign minimum, all other certification requirements that are set for, but it's not a license. It's a certi- certification.
And this is current, this is the current.
What we read is what the school board association gave the district, right, Robin, is that right? And your, and your doubt description was a little different than this. So my suggestion might be to just reference, can't we just reference what the, what the state regulations?
If it changes, then.
Then we have to change it.
Then we need to go back to this, but we just reference their policy.
See, then there's whatever the current policy is, and so, um, and maybe we should say that they're. Thirty or sixty-four, so it's a district superintendent and then there's also district superintendent alternative route. Yeah, so maybe you should mention that they're currently, those two routes. Those two routes right now.
Is that in A or B where we're putting the reference?
Did you find it in the back of the packet? You guys play your packet.
How does the regulation first change?
The regs don't really change, but the content changes, right?
Right, so we could reference this regulation over. Um, and title maybe unless they decide to change the title, but.
Okay, so how about if we put on the qualifications, the superintendent of schools will meet the constitutional and statutory provisions of South Carolina law and all state board regulations. I, do we really wanna have this, this, this section in red is really far too detailed.
Because you can't reference the regulations and the laws.
Right, and, and it sets some parameters that the next board may not want. What if the next board doesn't care if he has a master's degree? You know, there's no reason to sit that.
But for both of them, you have to have a master's degree right now.
If, if it's in the regulations, yeah, so let's just reference the regulation. Because they can change the regulation and then we won't have to change the goals. Yes.
So, and I think exactly that, because look, in, in B, the way the red is right now, it's mixing those two of the, the classic route versus the alternative route. And they're trying to clarify that, I think it's much better to say here, and then however this changes is what we do.
So we're referencing constitutional and statutory provisions as well as the state board regulations? Or just the state board regulations?
Oh, how about constitutional and statutory provisions, comma, state board regulations? And, oh, excuse me, take out the comma, and state board regulations.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah. I mean, so.
And then take out all this verbiage. You know, ten years of successful experience in a senior position.
Listen, darling, are you on A?
Are you still?
Yeah, we're on A and B, A and B and C.
Well, I think we're looking at getting rid of A, B, C, D and just making it an A.
Yeah.
That's what I was, I was hoping at.
All of it is just.
And C is a beauty.
It's that, well, because I got as far as.
Talk about lemon and apple pie. Duh, all right, so we're gonna move to take out A, B, C and D.
And read what you have one more time.
And read, and insert superintendent, superintendence.
A superintendent shall.
Will, shall, excuse me.
Meet.
Shall, um, meet.
All.
All constitutional and statutory provisions of the South Carolina code and all state board regulations or certification.
All state board of education certification regulations.
State board regulation, they call it state board.
Certification, yeah, certi.
Regulations for certification.
Regulations for certification.
I think that's.
I think that sounds good. Yeah, requirement certification at an advanced level.
Right.
And then you put regulation number forty-three dash sixty-four.
You could put in parentheses, and, uh, yeah, you could note that regulation number forty-three dash sixty-four. That's the specific one, and they don't change that, they're gonna say that.
Okay, superintendent's contract, Roman numeral four. Yeah, that's what the alarm is. I don't. Takes up space, but it just repeats the.
Should it say contract or superintendent's appointment?
No, it says superintendent's contract.
No, I know.
Oh, yeah, the appointment of the superintendent's.
But it's discussing the appointment, not the contract.
Right, so, yeah, so which, which is the wrong word?
I, I think contract is the wrong word.
Yeah.
Because we're not discussing the contract, we're discussing the appointment and how we get to that point, which is hiring.
How about appointment of the superintendent? Then maybe we can find enough money in the budget, then take the whole case down and put that as a packet for all to see.
It's that.
Okay. Okay, moving right along, Roman numeral five. Okay, moving right along, Roman numeral five. The appointment of the superintendent will be secured through an explicit contractual agreement, which states. The terms of the contract. Can we bring this? How about? Employment of superintendent will be. Via, will be done by contract only. So we can, would at least prohibit us from hiring somebody without a contract, but.
I would take out. I would just take out the explicit contractual agreement, because that's subjective, what's explicit?
Through a contractual agreement.
Through a contractual agreement.
And then can we get rid of which states the terms of the contract?
Yes.
Because that doesn't make sense. So we get the appointment of the superintendent will be secured through a contractual agreement. Gets it down to the, close to the bone. Right. Okay, Roman numeral six, formative evaluation. Now. I guess the formative, evaluation would be of the superintendent. So why are they saying that the board will establish an annual work plan and calendar for its work? The work of the board. Robin?
So the annual work plan is the calendar, the annual work plan calendar is what you all, you set in August. And those are the PEs. The PEs is what you look at, and you determine if you want to keep them, if you want to add to them, if you want to delete them. Because that's what you're asking the staff to bring back to you. So when you do the PEs, like you just did the last one of minority women, whatever, that's a PE. So you, you determine as the board what you want monitored and what you want looked at. You as the board developed a new PE, the FOIA PE, and you determine when you wanted that reported out. So the performance expectations cup is also part of the. Goal, the results that you evaluate the superintendent on. Are, are they doing the things that you want them to do? And they bring that back as evidence, saying yes.
Oh, I, I get the concept, okay.
So I mean, so that's what, what the, the kind of.
I get the concept, it's the wording here that made it wrong.
How else can you better word this?
How, alright, what if we were to take out the first runner unsentence? And say the superintendent will provide monitoring reports against performance expectations as agreed upon by the board and superintendent. Get rid of all that verbiage that precedes it.
But will you still have an annual work plan and calendar?
That's a board policy, that's not, we're supposed to be talking about the formative. We're supposed to have, we're talking about the formative evaluation of the superintendent. So that does it. That's not the place for us to commit to a work plan.
Well, should, besides just PEs, it should reference the results also, though. The superintendent will provide monitoring reports.
Well, the superintendent will provide monitoring reports. On progress against the PEs as agreed on by the board and superintendent. Because that's what, that's what we're doing.
That's what the formative is, yeah.
But what about the results?
The PEs. The PEs are not. Verbatim results, are they Robin?
No.
No, no, results is that document that we're gonna work on.
Yeah.
But the superintendent is going to be. Evaluated based on the results. And whether or not they go in line with what we've asked for. In the results document. So if we're talking about a formative evaluation, we should talk about PEs and the results.
Yeah, you got it. We should not reference, oh, I think, we should not reference PEs in this at all. And if the results we're gonna monitor, we're gonna measure the superintendent based on the results. And if they, if they wanna use PEs as evidence that they met the results, that's another thing entirely. But. If we try to measure PEs and results. There's no way we can come up with a concise. Evaluation, so why don't we just say it's performance. The superintendent will provide monitoring reports for progress against results. As agreed upon. By the board and superintendent. The, the PEs in that context are nothing but a tool.
Yeah, but then some PEs that one have results, I, I, I'm sure. One have a, a measuring result, I think results again for student achievement and academics, but the other things.
Yeah, and a higher.
Yeah.
There's certain things, there's certain things that's supposed to be listed in the results document that will be listed in the PEs.
Right. Right.
So we have to monitor the progress, like for example, the minority owned women businesses thing. They kinda make a presentation of where we are for this year or this quarter.
Wish I had a blackboard. How can we have a results and then PEs that don't tie to those results?
Because results have to do with academic achievement. The PEs have to do with operational aspects and different other, you know.
Because I think, I don't know.
Things we have, the result is supposed to be academic. Am, am I incorrect on that? The result is supposed to be academic in nature? The results document is, is based on academic progress, achievement gap, things like that. And then the PEs have to do with more operational aspects of the district. So we're looking at, number one, the results document, that, okay, we're looking at a formative evaluation of is the superintendent. Effectively meeting these results, these academic results, and is the superintendent operating the district? Under the PEs the way we think it should be.
Okay.
So that's why I think it needs to be both those.
Okay, right.
And so are we changing anything in that a little bit?
So.
I think we need to maybe rework it a little bit to make it more concise.
Okay, I think it'll be less confusing for my simple mind anyway if we get rid of a reference to the annual work plan and calendar. That's a boardy process tool. That's nothing to do with the superintendent meeting expectations of the results and the performance expectations. Really.
Yeah, that's not.
The only issue I have with that.
Huh?
The only issue I have with that.
Yeah.
Is that if we only keep the sentence that says the superintendent will provide monitoring reports, we then leave it up to the discretion of the superintendent when those monitoring reports are going to come to us.
No, as agreed upon by the board and the superintendent.
I don't think it makes a difference. I think, I think we need to be able to set the calendar, or we're not.
Oh, okay. But that doesn't have to be in this policy, that's all I'm saying. I'm, I, I buy the concept of a work plan, okay? But I, I think it confuses this. Because it's, it's a, the work plan is a process tool that we use for guidance, but we're not gonna measure the superintendent against the work plan. We're gonna measure the superintendent against results in the PEs.
Yeah.
So it's gonna confuse the issue if we have the work plan.
Yeah.
So when will the formative evaluations take place then? Because I think that's what the purpose of that. In the work planning calendar being mentioned is about speculating of how often are these monitoring reports gonna happen? Are they done quarterly, once a year, twice a year? I think that's why that is in there.
Alright, how about then? The superintendent will provide monitoring reports. Showing progress against. The results, required results and performance. In accordance with the annual work plan established by the board. It's just where that is.
Yeah, as long as, as long as it says when it's gonna happen, I'm fine. I, I'm a when, where, why, what person, so. You're gonna be evaluated, when are you gonna be evaluated, when are you gonna provide the reports? So, yeah, that last, however you say, it's not a good.
Okay. I'm gonna remember how we said it. Alright, let's try this. The superintendent will provide monitoring reports showing. Progress. Superintendent will provide monitoring reports against the results section and performance expectations. According to the work plan. Developed by the board. Adopted by the board, excuse me.
Annual work plan?
Annual work plan adopted by the board, okay? Alright, let me try this.
I agree, you haven't put this stuff needs to be in there at all.
It's a lit, it's too, it's too wordy.
And my mind is like saying.
Okay, the superintendent will provide reports.
Teacher, I'd say, it's like saying the students will be graded on A, B, C kinda testing during the year. But the teacher has to make up the test. I mean. That's the way I'm looking at it, because the teacher's responsibility to make up the test. It's not a common, you know, it's not directly related to what that student will be graded on. The student will be graded on what we say gonna be happening. It got no, you know, it's got no reflection on my responsibility. My responsibility and the board's responsibility is looked at by the public. In terms of this, superintendent is gonna do, whether we have that annual work plan or not. It's what we decide he's gonna do and when. So that's what I look at, I mean, putting an annual work plan in there, it's like.
I just want to.
Yeah, okay, timetable is, that's great, yeah, timetable is great.
So they have an expectation of how often they have to do something, too, you can't just say, hey.
I agree.
You can't go to them and say, okay, next week I need a monitoring report on.
Schedule monitoring, schedule monitoring, kinda, say it's a timetable, schedule monitoring. But to say we have to do that annual work plan to do that schedule monitoring. You know. We do, and we, but that's not something that we have to do to, to evaluate it at, at superintendent.
Okay, the superintendent will provide reports, monitoring, and also. The results. And performance expectations. Monitoring. I, I don't wanna use the word results twice, because that'll get confusing.
If it's in italics.
Huh?
If it's in italics, I'm indicating the document, if it's not, then it's. If, if the word results is in italics, then it's referencing the document, so it's maybe like underline it or something.
Oh, okay. Okay. Alright, so then we can use the results. Okay, so the superintendent will provide reports, monitoring results. Against. The results in italics. And performance expectations.
Can you, can you that over please? Can you do that over?
Read it again.
What?
Read it again.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
The superintendent will provide reports, monitoring results against the results in italics, results report.
And did you wanna use shall, if you will?
And performance expectations.
Did you wanna use shall?
Shall, yeah, you're right.
And then that last sentence that's there, the board will respond to each monitoring report by meeting over the following colon.
Hmm?
The, the next part, where it goes to A and B, there's, there's a sentence before that.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure that we're, A and B is good.
Oh, yeah.
You have to send a report. That was, uh.
Well, acceptance of the report as evidence of satisfactory performance. Let's say that. Getting a report every two months. And then you go to evaluate the superintendent at the end of the year. And something went haywire. If you've given six satisfакtries all year long. You're, you're in a bind if you try to give anything less than a satisfactory annual evaluation. Because the superintendent will try to think, what do you mean? You said it was satisfactory, every time I gave you a report, now you tell me it's not satisfactory?
Oh, that's correct, no, that's the way it should be, right, yes, that is correct on both ends, that's wishful. So we have to be careful when we just raise our hand and say, we accept that report and, you know.
Right. Yeah, it's.
Really.
As evidence of satisfactory performance.
Do you take issue with the satisfactory performance part of it?
Yes.
Yeah, acceptance of the report does not connotate.
Satisfactory, I believe that is satisfactory.
Could this say acceptance of the report, comma, or?
Well, yeah, I mean.
And then going to be like, so we should retake out as evidence of satisfactory performance?
How about acceptance of the report does not connotate?
Well, why, why, or, or B, I know. Or B, what's, what's B, I mean, look at B, ties in with A, cannot just be A or one, one thing.
I'm trying, what, what is it in performance reviews they always put? Signature of the employee does not indicate agreement with the. With the report, okay? So, everybody has seen that on performance reviews?
Yeah.
Okay, so how about if we had acceptance of the report does not indicate. Any category of performance. No, no, that's too clumsy. Acceptance of the report does not connotate. A satisfactory or non satisfactory. Opinion, what?
My, my part, yeah, I, my question from that, from the superintendent's viewpoint would be. How would I know to improve if I was, you know, as you gotta get sent him a message that it ain't happening?
The next sent, the next, the next line, do you expectation for improvement including a timeline based on the conclusion of majority of the board? I think that addresses what you were just answering, right?
Yes, and I don't see why A, if B is there, and, you know what I mean? I mean, if he's not expected to improve, then it's satisfactory. Yeah, alright.
I think it would be the accept the report, or say that there's an expectation.
And documented.
Right, I think the whole satisfactory performance indication, not that it isn't necessarily important, I think it's just, do we accept it as yes, you're meeting these? Or no, you're not, you need to do this, and here's the, and you're expecting timeline also.
Yes, right.
But I don't think that, um.
So you can read it and.
Because I think the formative evaluation, summative evaluation, all the stuff that's going on in these policies. Should be, in my opinion, used when we do. Create the contract for the superintendent, because this is what they should go by, along with other expectations that we have, but. This is the stuff that's, we collectively as board, we decide what are the results gonna be, what are.
How, how about if we combine it two and say, acceptance of the report may include an expectation for improvement. Including a timeline based on the conclusion of majority of the board.
Right, because that gives you the.
Because you may not.
And gives you the grounds.
And accept it, but also say, hey, you need to do X, Y, Z.
Yeah, gives you the grounds to come back at the end when you get to the summative and say, hey. You know, P five, we told you to improve, and when you're looking at it, it hadn't improved by the, by the end.
So then we need to have an alternative, though, if we have acceptance of it with, okay, you need to fix this, there should also be the non acceptance of it.
Okay, yeah, well.
Because if you're, you're being evaluated at a, at, at a job, if you're think, if you're having a. Performance review at your job, they usually will say, okay, you performed satisfactory, here's your areas of improvement, or no, it's just not satisfactory. Um, you know, so there should probably be the alternative in there, too.
Uh, you mean, they clearly whether it's satisfactory or non satisfactory.
Yeah.
Acceptance in this case, I don't think mean that we, as long as we accept. Acceptance, in this case, I don't think mean that we, it's only, we accept it as a report, not as a satisfactory report.
Well, it says the board will respond to each monitoring report by indicating one of the following. So such and such receives that would need to be changed then.
Well, yeah, maybe we do that, but I, you know, if a guy, if a person makes a report, you have to receive that report, whether it's good or bad.
Because they receive.
Yeah, receive, I mean like.
Receive, I heard Jeff.
Accept, that's right, we accept what you said. Now, it's not accurate.
Ah, okay. All right, so the board will acknowledge receipt of the report.
Okay, good, but how do we?
Then you're, you're not casting any judgment on it, that's the back of fight you're with it.
It was the whole concept of participation trophies, you know, like.
But we have to send them a message to, or her a message.
Okay, how about, how about, uh.
Go ahead.
The board will acknowledge receipt of the report. Their acknowledgement may contain an expectation for improvement, including a timeline based on the conclusion of a majority of the board.
That's possible, I, I want you to, to be reassuring too, if it's good.
Yeah, I think there's, there should be very clear like this.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, yeah.
We received it, right, just like, yes, and then in both instances though, there should be the expectation for improvement and a timeline.
Yeah.
So either acceptance or, because then I, I also would think that if you are not accepting of the report, that the timeline is probably going to be a lot more severe and a lot more detailed. Because you might accept the report, but then there's a little leeway there, okay, we're going to give you a few months, but if you really don't accept it, it's really unacceptable. You may be more stringent.
Yeah, you almost cannot expect that to be, you almost can't expect that, not.
I heard somebody knocking.
Oh. This will take three minutes. Okay.
There's a timeline on this report. Especially Tesco will come.
Do you have any more spare time?
A lot of times Tesco's late.
You want to serve on left dinner, uh, county.
What do you do on that?
I don't know, put in trouble. They need someone to serve on county beautification, you know, and I'm like, hell.
You are bluffing or what, I mean, bluffing.
Yeah, bluffing.
And there's a county specs.
I can't commit my husband to kill me.
All right, yeah.
Enough. Mom, are you going to a meeting? Yes, baby, I'm going, okay, see you later, alligator.
I saw that skit.
That's so cute. Just got a little cold today. I got their fill of mommy, they were over the weekend, they wanted their dad. You want me that's gone? So they're like, wait.
Yeah, that's right.
Here, here.
Did you figure it out?
Huh? Uh, we're talking about.
We're talking.
Totally unrelated.
Okay.
It's like.
What are we to do?
What, how?
Yeah, I agree, yes.
So we, so, so you've got to give him the, the superintendent, I think. I mean, you have to give him sort of, how should I say, a grading scale or whatever, or, you know, you've got to give him reports along the way, you can't just say we're accepting or not, or, you know, or not accepting, or acknowledging receipt of the report, you've got to, you've got to grade paper.
Indicate, yeah, indicate, was that a sample thing or not?
How about a discuss, let's see, a discussion, uh, there's probably be feedback, let's see, I'm thinking a lot of it. Some verbiage acknowledging that there will be feedback and input from and then from either A, individual board members, or B, an acknowledgement by the board after the discussion.
Is there, isn't there?
No, because, I don't think you should do that because individuals don't have any power, so to speak. I think that's problematic with that kind of wording.
Well, I think individuals have the right to talk to the superintendent in a meeting and say, I think this could be done better.
Yes, they have that right, but no.
That's why it's an input, it's not.
Actually not.
Is, is there an organization?
Individual members shouldn't have to sell the whole board on validity of their input to the superintendent or how things are going.
Well, you may be one of you.
Yeah, but, it's something.
Is there an organization that maybe provides guidelines for stuff like that? Like, I know big corporations that they have their expectation documents and they do their quarterly reports. Is there something that we could maybe look at as a guide for appropriate language for something like this? Because, I mean, we can hem and haw over it all day long, but if we look at something that like is fortunate by kind of company that is embedded by a very big legal team and, you know, they probably have at least a guide, use it as a guide for something.
Yeah, you still have to decide on how, what do we want from the end result of a presentation as how we conclude it and he reads it.
That's right.
How does it pass through?
Yeah, uh, correct, you know, and, and like John said, one person, you know, complaining about the report or saying, I turned, I turned the report down and everybody else quiet about it, don't mean it's negative.
I think it was, it was kind of. Well, you talk about how you have judges' performance, it had objectives and.
I think the reason why this is such a topic of conversation is because in the previous contract, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there was reference to satisfactory performance and it went directly to an annual bonus or payout.
Yes.
Yes.
And so that's why this is so important that we get this right, because if it's going to be referenced in the contract, we need to make sure that we're getting what we need and he's getting what he needs, you know?
Yeah, and to that point, Gino's assessment, grading, because maybe in, maybe in the contract we put in certain, you know, numerical standards for, for what is satisfactory and what is not.
Right, that's, and that's why I mentioned this.
You know, maybe, maybe there's a tool that, when you can find out.
That's why I was mentioning another tool, because I know like, my husband works for Gulfstream, they have a specific metric for this. Okay, this is how much your raise will be based on your.
They have a formula for him, based on like, what, on what he achieves or what, production.
It's also similar to like a salesperson or whatever, you know, you get an additional bonus if you meet a certain quota, you know, so.
Right, and that's what I anticipated about too, except we haven't established how to gauge that, that satisfactory, right?
We have to put it in that contract you have with him. You have to let him know, it's going to be that, like, he needs somebody.
But it shouldn't just be, okay, satisfactory, you did this.
But, but to, 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 uh. Evaluate the superintendent, what report are you going to monitor?
The results and the E's.
Results of what?
Pardon?
Result of what?
The results document that we're going to work on Tuesday.
Huh?
Tomorrow.
The results document for academic achievement.
Okay.
And the performance expectations.
Uh, how, how many times a year are you going to, how many times?
That's why I mentioned the timeline. We need to set that out.
And also you have to set a date that he's going to be, that the person is going to be evaluated.
Yeah.
Because in the past, you set a date and we never made it because of the state.
Right.
Because the Tesco mistake sometime to come in late.
Because, yeah, that's, that's where we said. That's where the, the state, that's why we're doing this, because the, the state, you know, documents should just be one point of, one part of the evaluation. We, we, we should have our internal evaluation because I'm, I don't, I know, I think we need to, to establish our own climate.
But one thing I can say that once, when we was under policy governance, it was easier to, 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 um, to come to a, to an agreement because the superintendent would come to us, in fact, every meeting, who would post every monitor, to be monitored, but we got away from that, so, you know.
Let's try, let's try something. Let's take Roman numeral seven and put it ahead of formative evaluation. See if we establish a better line or hierarchy. Board will need the superintendent at least once annually prior to February first for the purpose of establishing and or updating district performance goals and objectives for the ensuing school year. Okay, now, the formula of evaluation is how we check on that. Right? I mean, you can't, you can't be evaluating on one set of goals all year long and then turn around and using other set of goals in the summer.
Right.
Well, some have talked about it, it uses like performance goals and objectives, but.
Yeah, but, but, we, we could easily say, the goals, it goes on to say that the goals and objectives are to be reduced to writing and be among the criteria by which the board annually evaluates the superintendent. The board shall annually develop a timeline for collecting any and all data needed to evaluate the superintendent. At that point, it can start to take verbiage out of Roman numeral six and say that the superintendent will provide monitoring of reports to this end as agreed upon by the board and the superintendent, and does away with the whole section six actually, and shows. I just think they were across purposes.
No, no, I agree with you, I agree with you in moving seven above six, but I don't.
But, yeah, but six needs to be there, yeah.
I, but six needs to be there, and also I don't agree with the language that's in seven where it talks about performance goals and objectives, because now we've got another freaking document, excuse my language, that we don't know what it is, don't know where it is, don't know what it's, are we going to find it in the strategic policy manual? Where's, where's this performance goals and objectives stuff, where does it want?
That's the next, that's, that's on the next year.
That's, that's, that's something we have to live with, the board hasn't done the results page. Board has to do the results page. The policy assumes there will be a results page, and that's what's referenced. The results page does not have to be done right now to develop a policy that references it.
No, but what I'm saying is, what is performance goals and objectives?
What?
What is performance goals and objectives, what is that?
That's.
Is that a whole nother document on top of the results document and the P E's that were there?
No, no, I think that's the same thing. They're, they're setting it up for next year because he has, he's succeeded this year, failed this year, so now he's, you know, you said you were going to improve the, the achievement gap by seven percent. And, okay, you ended up, this evaluation is at five percent. Now, how do we set something for next year where we anticipated seven percent this year, five percent next year, but now you only made five percent? How do we make the adjustment, that's what this means.
Then I think you need to call it something and act, it, it should have a title other than performance goals and objectives because it's just so vague in, in what it actually is. And I don't think we've ever provided a summative evaluation to any superintendent as far as I'm aware of.
Well.
So if we're going to have a policy, or we're going to call it performance goals and objectives, what's going to be included in there and when are we going to give it to them? I just.
Yeah, and when are we going to give it to them, say, February first?
You know, so.
How do you?
It's, 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 your line of reasoning is sound, as long as the, as long as we don't make the same mistake that an awful lot of boards make when they develop these goals and expectations. They say something like, improve public relations, what's that mean? You know, they put dumb stuff like that in there that just can't measure, you know?
Right.
So it has to be very disciplined.
It has to be metrable, it has to be, you know, easily.
So if the question is simply, what do we call the reports in Roman numeral seven, formerly Roman numeral six? Right? How about progress reports? I think we're overcomplicating it.
No, that's fine.
So the superintendent will provide progress reports, okay? We're back to the previous one, right?
Or informative?
Superintendent will provide progress reports as agreed upon by the board and superintendent.
That's the, yeah.
But what about the results and performance expectation language, is that still in it?
Okay, progress reports against stated, stated results and performance expectations. Or we can take a little bit of language out of that first run on sentence and say the superintendent will provide progress reports
But if it's a.
Against each stated student performance specified in the results and the scheduled monitoring of each performance expectation.
And that kind of clarifies the two differences in that sentence, but, you know, and, and that might make more sense because we rely on the superintendent to give us a, a real honest answer on what's going on.
Right.
You know, not that we're going to have to listen and then look at each other and interpret what's going on. You got to give us, you know, how did you do?
Make sure that the superintendent never dreads telling us the bad news.
Right, well, yeah. And then how, how to be better with it?
You only get mad if they didn't tell you bad news and don't have a plan to improve it.
Yeah, to prove it, right.
Then you can get mad, right?
Or he tells you something is not true, and you assume it's good, then when the state report card comes out, nothing corresponds.
Okay, so.
So.
Let's, let's think on this, okay? All we are, this is wordsmithing, I think, we're finally done with wordsmithing.
I think we.
So let's, let's think on this and we'll take it up next week, which is actually the next opportunity we're going to have to talk because we're out of time, yes.
So, I'm pretty certain, isn't the Ori County, um, their board policy in board docs for this week? Am I right or am I, or maybe it was in their last.
In their results?
Well, it's, it's like a sixty-two page policy, and like I said, eight pages are results, but I bet you they have something of how the superintendent was evaluating it, so I had to think and work at.
Look at others, you're right.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, if we know what we want.
It was a parent looking for a student who didn't show up home on the bus, who's been gone for the last three hours, whose phone pinged to say that he was here, but he wasn't, and so we were wandering the building, the soccer field. I called the principal, we were starting, and the kid just finally called, said he's at left in high school football practice. Mother's outside crying and upset, but now, you said.
While, while we were gone, we volunteered you for twenty-seven things and we decided what to do about that paragraph, which is nothing, we can take it up again next week.